It's a work session, so it's a little more casual, but I will say, I am aware that there's been some misinformation out there as far as what this meeting's about, what's going on with the sewer. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be having public comment after our work session. We'll be talking about the sewer, what's going on with Aqua, giving you all the information we have as we give it to the rest of council and discuss amongst ourselves where we stand with that, where we stand with the operations of the sewer and all of that stuff. And then after you guys have all that information to absorb, I will open the floor. And we're still doing tours, anybody who wants.
Let's see it.
Down at the sewer fund. So that's where we're at, as far as how that's going to go. So the first thing we'll talk about is our first conversation that we had with Aqua. It was the sewer committee. They have said, at least in the preliminaries, that there's no reason to be meeting with the entirety of council over and over again. That's why the committee exists, just like the streets and parks and everything else has committees. And this is so preliminary with the discussions. There's no decisions being made anytime soon. There is due diligence that still needs to be done on both sides. We have talked about doing a third-party appraisal ourselves. We're certainly not comfortable just accepting whatever they tell us something might be worth. And that's not to say that we're looking to sell the sewer. That narrative is inaccurate. We're entertaining an offer, which we don't even have yet. We're entertaining a discussion, is a more honest way to put it. They expressed interest in having a discussion with us. They don't even know if it's worth them doing. So we're open to that dialogue because there's not a reason to just arbitrarily shut down that discussion without hearing it out. And then when it comes time to actually maybe make a decision as to whether it's yea or nay, that's when we can really dig a little deeper as far as is it good for the citizens? Is it good for the borough? Is it good for the long-term future? All these kinds of things. So I just want to make it clear that everyone understands nothing's going to be happening tomorrow. There's not going to be any secret meeting where this deal suddenly goes through. We're going to have town hall discussions with the community before it happens. Aqua has already told us they're willing to come to, as many of those as we feel we need to have, to talk to our citizens directly to answer questions. Because if the sale goes through, we would all become their customers. If it doesn't go through, it stays the way it is now. So that's primarily what's going on there. It's, like I said very, very, very early, literally just talking out the logistics of if we were to try to negotiate a sale, what kind of a sale might it be? Because there's a couple of different ways they can go about it, based on whether or not we think we're failing system in need of a buyout, which we do not. Or whether it's like a fair market value type of situation where they come to us and we all kind of figure out the numbers of what we think it's worth, what they think it's worth. And even the state, because one of the things we learned in the call, there's a lot of oversight in these types of deals. There are organizations out there that even if Aqua throws out a number, we throw out a number, we agree on it, we're happy with it, there's outside organizations that will then look at that and say whether they think that's fair or right to the citizens and they'll file a lawsuit. I believe that's what's happened in Butler, over whether or not they think it's in the best interest of the citizens. All of that is so far down the road from where we're at. Is there anything you guys who are on the call can add to what I've said?
Well, the discussion is that in all likelihood, they're going to get a third-party appraisal, as will we, in that, again, it isn't just fair to say they're going to put out a proposal with X number of dollars and we nod our head yes or no. A third-party appraisal will give everybody about, you know, give them and us both. But also, one of the big things is the input and the control of the PUC.
Yes.
Regardless of what the sale numbers are or projected, they have to be the, they're the ones that approve it yea or nay.
Yeah, my bad. It's going to get hot. I'm sorry.
Yeah, a lot of crowd on this bar. And then it's, then it's six months after, after that, before the, you know, the PUC has six months to give an approval. That, you know, that, we knew that from before, but that's, the PUC will ultimately be the deciding factor in any negotiation or sale. And, you know, while there usually isn't a lot of pushback, there can be, and like Jason may mention up there, there's some major litigation going on, and I believe it's about their city, I'm not sure.
It's one of the two they talked about.
Yeah, but in all likelihood, the way we left it the other day is we're going to look at who some of the third-party appraisals are, appraisers, and what the fees are. I mean, I don't know if we want to throw out some of the potential figures.
We've, I mean, I'm, we don't need to hide things, so.
We were told it could be anywhere from $10,000 to $30,000, just for a third-party appraisal.
No, the last phase appraisal is something that happens regardless of what we all do. If we get into that level of negotiation with them, an appraisal will come down from the state level with separate appraisers, independent appraisers for each organization, one for Aqua, one for us. So even if we do appraisal now, this second one will happen as part of it. That's the one that's $30,000, it's a lot more intensive than what we might necessarily have to do at this stage. But we have talked about maybe making that recommendation to council that if we did want to move forward with the possibility of talking to Aqua, it's in our best interest as a borough to at least have an independent idea of what we have. Anything to add from the phone call?
Really, you know, the big thing that took away is the question with the appraisal of it, how do you sell something if you don't know what it's worth? You know what I mean?
Exactly.
You couldn't look anybody in the public in the eye and say, "Well, yeah, we got a good price if you don't know." And they can't negotiate a price when you don't know what it's worth, you know? So I think if your money well spent, even if it's 30 grand, you're going to do it.
Do it right.
I wouldn't want to negotiate without knowing what it's worth.
Well, and then we also would have the leverage to either negotiate the best price or know when to say no.
Yeah.
Because it may be that what we have, they're just not going to come to a price that we think is fair and that we have to, we have to turn away.
Oh, one other possibility for, there's, there are three, three different ways that a sale can proceed, and not the least of which is the bidding process. It could potentially go out for bid, and then if there are any other entities interested in any other companies that would like to take a run at it, then it's a bid process. But these are all, this is all part of the very early-stage due diligence where we are. So we have another tentative, tentative phone call in October.
October.
We've got two, four, two.
We've got a phone call.
We had two subjects covered that took an hour and a half.
And so another thing we wanted to cover in this work session, because there is another phone call coming up with Aqua, is to give an opportunity to the rest of council who is present, if there are any things you need brought up or asked in that meeting, this is an opportunity to make sure we have that information to provide to them. And obviously, if you think of something between now and then, that's fine too. But, you know, that's, this is a work session, so primarily it's for us to discuss these things in an open, more casual form. So I guess at this point, before we move on, does anyone have any thoughts right now about it?
There wasn't a call.
Yep.
Okay.
Who has control of the price rate behind it? Do we have control of that, or once they buy it, they have control?
Once it's theirs, they would have control, but we could negotiate.
Do you see oversight?
Yeah, there's government oversight on that, PUC. And we could certainly, as part of our negotiations, try to work something out where rates stay in certain whatever, they can only, we can try.
When we froze the water in two years.
Three years, two years. Two, two years. And that was mandated at that time, but now it's not. Now, I think, I believe it's negotiated, but I may be wrong.
Two years.
Yeah.
But we had, we had a rate freeze for two years after the sale of the water.
So if we were to raise the water now, to the public, or sewer, excuse me, to the public, would that help any with our, with what we've got down there now?
That's something that we have on, I have on an agenda here to address here a little bit later, but, yeah, there is, there is that potential for, you know, a rate adjustment and possibly looking at other forms of billing. If you wanted, if you want to do a little comparison, Robin, just for, by the way, I commend you for being here. I just found out that you were injured, and I'm sorry for that. I mean, I've had people tell me that their water rates have tripled since Aqua took over. Okay, let me tell you, before the sale to Aqua, the water rates, I'm speaking water, not wastewater, the water rates were an $18 base and $6.85 per thousand. An average of, an average house that used 4,000 gallons a month would have been paying $42.20. That was, that was on our structured rate at that time. Okay? Based on today's rate, it's $20.51 base, 13.05, and then it goes up to 50.45 over 2,000. An average 4,000 gallon use home today is paying 77.51 compared to the 42.20, so that's...
Well, it's, that's, you know...
Let's just extrapolate that out to see where Aqua, to see where Aqua is, because that's who we're dealing with right now. Over this, over a span of 10 years, the rates have gone up about 78%, about less than 10% per year. And I think if you adjust for inflation, when you look at what, what we have over what we had 10 years ago, the other number that I believe is, really needs to be looked at is, and we just got this figure this week, Aqua has put in excess of $6.5 million in our water system since they bought it. They've put $6.5 million in Mount Jewett's water system, and they'll document that. We struggled, we couldn't even put a $50,000 pump station up on Maple Lane, and the water pressure was so poor up there in the summertime, they had no water, people were going to hotels there. So anyway, when you look at, yeah, but that's not a double or a triple. If anybody has a double or a triple water rate, this, there's one of three things that's happened in the last 10 years. Number one, you got a leak. And if you have a leak of that magnitude, Aqua knows about it. Their system is so developed, much more so technologically than what we ever had, they'll know the leak probably way before you will. Number two, you're just using that much more water. More than likely, if someone's water rate has increased double or triple, what was happening before the sale, and Brett, you should be able to document this or validate, over 25% of the water meters were not working. They weren't working for a long period of time, and so their water bills were being estimated, and in many cases, they were being estimated low. And so they were getting, customers were getting a heck of a break because they weren't able to afford to go in and replace the meters. They were doing a couple here and a couple there, but when you got 25% of your meters that weren't reading properly, the billing was so skewed, and also our leakage rate at that time was approaching 50%. 50% of the water that was being made at the plant was being lost, the leaks were so bad.
We were over 50.
It was over 50. And so that's bizarre, that's bizarre. I mean, I can't imagine a lumber mill, 50% of what they're trying to do goes up, is it a trash? But anyway, the point is, is when you look at what, what we had before, but if anybody's rate has doubled or tripled, in all likelihood, they weren't getting billed the proper rate because of a faulty meter, or they're just using that much more. Because, again, on a 4,000 gallon, and I see average read on a, on an average one, it's 4,000 gallons, so.
Anything else right now about that phone call? Keep it in the back of your mind, because like I said, the next phone call with them is coming October 4th.
As tentative as this time?
Tentatively, yes, tentatively, scheduled for October 4th, so a few weeks out, and it is before our next meeting, if it happens at that day. So if you guys think of anything that you want drawn up, please reach out to one of us. Let's see, tentatively talking, um, is there anything else on that? You want to talk about your collection system?
Yeah, yeah, I'd, we've, we've had some discussion on the committee about the collection system, and short-term, mid-range, long-term projects, goals of how to approach it in terms of what are we going to do as we move forward operating the system? In any business, you can, you either capitalize or you expense. I don't care what, I don't care what business you're in. In my business, I have to, I have to talk to my accountant and decide, do I need to capitalize on newer, newer equipment? Or do I have enough depreciation and investment credit? Or do I put, do I, do I expense and continue to run older equipment? So do you capitalize or do you, do you expense? For decades, we have done little or no capitalization on the wastewater system. There's been expensing, but usually only when it's absolutely necessary to go in and replace and repair something, as opposed to trying to address something in a preventive maintenance fashion by either updating or upgrading or replacing something before it becomes an issue and you have to take down an emergency and call a crew out.
So why didn't we let, why, why didn't we do prevent?
I can't answer that because that would have been, that would have been something that's happened over the last 80 years, for whoever was in charge of...
But when we took that, or, you know, whoever is in it now, in the last, I'm going to say 10 years, I haven't been here, but why didn't we not do prevent to come to that?
We just took it over here, what, May? And so, so, you know, what we're, what we as a committee have talked about, and what we intend to propose to the council, is to come up to formulate a plan of short-term, long-term capitalization in order to address these things and try to get, try to get somewhere to where we can say, okay, rather than just stopgap repairs at the time, what can we do? And how do we assess that? You've got, you know, sooner or later, everything has a life expectancy. It wears out regardless of what, what it is. Things just don't have an indefinite lifespan. What we, what we've talked about is trying to do a short-term, mid-range, long-term projects, and we, in order to do that, you have to assess, appraise, prioritize, and implement. You have to assess the entire situation, and what, what, what we're going to have to do is utilize the sewer operator, the maintenance crew, and it will probably almost certainly involve engineers and contractors to come in and look at, at, break it out into sections and phases and say, okay, what's most important as we, as we move forward trying to implement some sort of cost-effective upgrading, rather than wait until we, we just absolutely have to do it or have a DEP mandate? Some of the red fladdock hotspots that we've identified, and by no means am I saying that these are the only ones, or these are the worst in any particular order, but just moving from east to west. The East End Pump Station, while it is upgraded, was it 11, 12 years ago?
Yeah, like 2011, it got upgraded.
So it's 13 years ago. And it's functioning a lot better than it was, and we're not getting here the overflows or the DEP violations. It still is an issue, and it's an issue to the point to where, correct me if I'm wrong, we cannot add any more units down there. The only thing we can do is if a blighted home or something gets removed, or somebody's replacing something, the number of units that we have down there is all that we're allowed to have. Because of the inadequacy of what we see down there and the DEP's mandate, there could be no more growth and expansion down there. So that's one area that almost certainly will have to be somewhere at or near the top of the list. Another area that we've had issues on at a higher percentage rate is McClellan and Fuller in that neighborhood. It was some years ago, but I was up there on site one day when the operator and contractor were up there. Even though the resident denied it, there was a plug of, they were putting non, what's the word, non, non...
Non-cushion breaks.
They were just putting, putting stuff in there, and so, you know, that turned out to be, it was bad enough, they had to dig it down, they had to call out Roto-Rut or somebody and flush it out. But, you know, and then just this year, we had a major issue up here. And so that's a spot that probably would require some looking at to see where it fits in priority. We've had three major issues on West Main Street in recent years between Dayton and the Borough Line. And all three of these have impacted residences. Two of them ended up with that meat into the homes. I tried to come up with some valuation of what those, of what that cost. Unfortunately, the numbers weren't that accessible through the sewer authority's records. I do know that the one in particular, we got by pretty decent. We shelled out $1,500 to cover the deductible, but Surf Pro was on scene for, if not days, I think weeks, and filled two big dumpsters to reconcile the situation. The one out on Red Barn Hill, again, the numbers are kind of skewed because of who paid what through insurance, but that project cost somewhere around $50,000 to reconcile out on Red Barn Hill. So, you know, when you start looking at, okay, how do you identify the worst places? And then where do you want to go to capitalize, rather than, or do you, do you just wait till it's a must situation? Also, West Main, what's the number there by Tom, between Thomases and East? Anyway, we had, we had a major root ball, and that was about $5,000.
That was like $12,000.
$12,000 to auger through a root ball, and that didn't really fix it all. That did it auger through, we didn't dig down and replace the line. So there's those situations that, you know, until you start doing internal investigation of the lines to see where that is, but we were able to open that line up out there. But realistically, that line probably should have been on the replacement list, it bogged down, went through it, or down the line. So anyway, those are, those are some of the things that we're looking at and trying to formulate some type of a, of a short-term, long-term plan that, you know, as we move forward, I mean, we have to look at what we're going to do with it and how we're going to operate it cost-effectively, and try to upgrade it as we can out there. So any other questions as far as...
So as far as the Infrastructure Structure Act, what's available to us?
What?
The Infrastructure Structure Act.
Well, right now, we have the Eads Group working to prepare Penn Vest funding and approach any and all grant availability. They're a big firm, they have a lot of offices, and they know more what's available than what we have, and they know what fundings are available. So when the Sewer Authority met with the Eads Group, we sat down and started to formulate a plan as to Penn Vest funding and what it would take. So the initial was, East End Pump Station must be fixed, and all the lines that made the East End Pump Station, that was the must, and the Forest Main that comes from the pump station. Then the other thing we looked at was the ponds themselves and the dredging and all of that. So we formulated a plan to take care of all of Main Street, all of the West, East End, and the ponds to start, and put the Eads Group to working on that. Well, they stopped because they thought they were going to sell. They called us, "No, we, we need to move forward as, if we're going to maintain it, it's a possibility that we could sell, but it's not guaranteed, and we don't want to miss out on funding." It's, every quarter, the Penn Vest allotments, they meet to dol out the money. There is quite a bit of money now. A lot of people have got it, Elgin got it, but...
Shekelhaus got a lot.
But we want to make sure that we don't miss the boat on it. So they are working to put a plan together that puts in the East End, they got to do all the pricing on it. So they are working on it now, and if there's other funding, if nothing's available, make sure to let us know. That's what they do, and that's how they make the money. If we sell, we're not making money off of this, so they have incentive to work in our investing.
What we do know is from the previous attempt to make a run of Penn Vest is that our rates are so low, we don't qualify for squat diddly.
Well, what they, what they, when we had our meeting, they call it the assessed affordable rate. So what Penn Vest will do is come in and they'll look at, okay, here's what the neighboring communities are, here's what your population and information, their income data shows, and here's what we believe is the true affordable rate for your area. At the time, I think it was like $78 a month, basically, was where they were at with it. We're eating a ballpark. So at Wilcox, people are paying almost 100, depending if they're metered or non-metered. Lance Corners, they're paying 60. So it's, it's a, they're looking into all of them. Maybe there's a mechanism that's not Penn Vest, and I'm sure they can let us know, but I don't know all the grant programs, there's, there's a lot.
Why are you looking at dredging the ponds instead of saying, I don't know, getting the tanks?
Getting what?
Getting the tanks.
What tanks?
Big old tanks, open up, fiberglass, concrete, instead of ponds.
Talking like an extended air plant or an SBR?
No, just a regular old, instead of a pond, you have a tank. You ever see a real plant?
I've got a couple different plants.
Well, they have little tanks, spurs, grinders.
Yeah, and these ponds make phenomenal water. They, they make great water. And they're virtually maintenance-free other than the aeration. But at those pond, or those plants, if a pump goes down, if an electrical control panel, if one circuit shortcircuits, the whole, the whole process basically stops. There's a lot of maintenance to those that, you know, just one sewer pump's like seven grand, and then you get multiple of these different pump stations. As long as these ponds are maintained and dredged, haven't dredged ever, to my knowledge. So it has to happen, but...
When you said the sides were having an issue.
The sides can have an issue, but what we looked into with the Eads Group was dredging and then lining the ponds, so that you take away that worry.
So same difference to the tank, though?
No, that would be substantially less than...
No, but what I'm saying is, if you lined it, it would be...
Yeah, I mean, you would take away the potential for catastrophic slope failure, which is possible down there. Big thing is something like the Turtles, and some of the critters digging in the banks, when they, they get in there, start digging around, that's a problem.
They'll probably eat their way through the wire, too.
Yeah, and I don't know. But, you know, if we were to put in a conventional plant with the current system, we would probably have to have one size that no smaller than a minimum, probably 1.0. We'd have 1 million gallons a day, maybe 1.5 with Guy and I. We only, on a regular basis, around 100, 150,000 on a, like, dry day like today, but whatever rains, it spikes. And you'd have to have the capacity for it. So we, we built a huge plant, but nine times out of 10, we wouldn't be running that capacity, but it doesn't care because it's at Sussex, you know what I mean?
Can a plant that size, what cost?
I don't know, because I hadn't even thought of entertaining it, because those ponds work, they just need maintenance.
I'm just thinking of the long-term, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we get these ponds dredged and aligned, and if you can even fix the bank, you might be able to pump ground in like they did the dam, things like that, to ensure that it's not going to blow out. You know, geologists study, Aqua had a geologist down there walk around, I wasn't in on the meeting, they just went and looked at it. Apparently, they're not too concerned, but there are some spots that are a little iffy, but, you know, we would have to look.
I don't know if the number's exact, but I have contacts in Elgin, and they're, they're in the middle of a 14, 15 million dollar renovation of water and sewer, and they got about half of it through Penn Vest at low interest, so they, you know, and the rest of it was grants. So they're still on the hook for about $7 to $8 million in low-interest loan.
Shekelhaus here got 15.3.
Did they get it all, the grant?
Well, they, $112,000 in Penn Vest loan.
Not bad at all.
No, that's good.
And that's sort of my thought.
And every, when we talk to, about the grant loan ratio, it all depends who puts in. Nobody puts in, and they got X amount of pond money, they give it off to you. So you might have to wait... So you might have to wait, it might take a couple of years. You know what I mean? But there's no guarantee. Right now, they do have quite a bit of money, but it takes a long time to prepare all the documents, get it in. And if you delegate a favorable rate, you can always go back. And, you know, just because you put in for it doesn't mean you gotta accept it. If it's ninety-five percent loan and ten percent grant, I think you, anyway, you know.
No, you couldn't afford to pay a fifteen, fifteen dollars.
I would, in my own admittedly perhaps ignorant perception on, on this, is that that should probably be a part of an overall, like we're trying to speak about priorities and, and what types of issues we're facing and maybe in order, like we did out at the parks. So what's the most important things that need to be addressed? The overall health of the current station would be one of those things. Because if, say, the East End is priority and we have some of these other areas, so then that would go a little further down the list as far as something to be addressed. Because any money that would have to go to matching anything, we would be prioritizing to getting off of the DEP list and things like that. So I think it's a good suggestion. But I think it has to just fall in with all the priorities as far as the rankings of what we as a council decide. And, and I'm not saying I know what the most important thing is, that's a group discussion. But that's kind of my thought on that. Like it's, where are our priorities? If the ponds and the system that we have is stable and if it gets assessed by engineers and all look at it, say, if you do this and do this, it'll be fine for thirty, forty more years, great. We might need to focus on some other things first.
Or try to lump it all in one.
I don't know if you got any idea. If you're gonna go, if you're gonna go for Penn Vest and we're gonna try to get ninety percent grant, you gotta lump it all in. And if it comes back, it's too expensive, then to your point, cut back to pro or, you piecemeal it if you have to.
But you'll have all the numbers.
And, yeah, they should change if you.
Well, they'll change.
Adjust for inflation, yeah.
Change.
Are you talking about my roof?
No, well, yeah.
My roof's a good example of kind of what we're gonna be talking about tonight. I'm just gonna put it out there because when I moved here in twenty nineteen, I priced up my roof and it was thirty thousand dollars. And I just put it in and it was fifty-four. And that is five years. So that is not just roofs, that is everything and everywhere. And that includes.
You had to make sure.
Borough maintenance, sewer maintenance, everything that we have to do, those costs are ridiculously higher than they used to be. And all of that factors into deciding what the best path forward is.
I just know the government's handily handing out money.
And if we can put together a package and a proposal that includes whatever those numbers are, shoot for the moon.
Well, that's what, that's what the Eads Group's been trying to do. It was every bit of the East End, the main line from Hamlin Bank to Division Street and every railroad crossing that you go under, the main issues. Now, all the side streets and all eighty-year-old lines, but just, you know, those are in our street. We can control it. When you start messing with Penn Dot and all that stuff, it's, it's, yeah, bumps the price, you know what I mean?
But the D, that also included the dredging and.
Even the dredging and the pond, yeah. It's also gonna be included.
And those pumps that you got?
Speaking of the.
The ones that they wear, mis-sized?
No, areas.
Whatever, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's a two hundred fifty thousand dollar electric one, I believe that's it.
So to that point, I would like to throw the floor to you to discuss the ponds. You talked about a little bit, but just the ponds, the aerators that are sitting there, all, whatever's going on down there, just to kind of lay it out, where are we at?
Yeah, so myself and Bo Shetler from the Eads Group did the sledge survey. Did that last Friday, went around Pond One is a rate around the foot. And where you gotta be, it's twenty percent, DP wants under twenty percent of the capacity, which four-foot DP pond, twenty, or one foot of sledge, we're, we're above it. So Pond Two is about eight inches with five foot of water. And Pond Three, or Pond Three is about six inches with five and a half foot. Now, it's, it's been low flow, ponds could be higher, each one of them could be probably about a foot higher if it was filled to capacity, except, with the exception of Pond One, that one is, it might go up and down a couple of inches if it's very high flows. So we're definitely gonna have to do desludgeing of some sort. Now, there's robotic desludgeing, there's parts where they go in and actually, you know, grain the pond and make temporary arrangements, you can do half a pond and things of that nature and dry them out, have the sledge pressed on site, take it to the landfill. The, the biggest cost is disposal of the landfill and the testing that goes into it. I don't think DP's gonna start pressing us unless it starts making bad water, which could happen. Talking to Bo, one lagoon plant they run, I can't remember where it's at. DP wasn't mugging them until their numbers, test results, they sent out the BP lab sample, started coming back bad. And then DP started digging, saying, oh, that's why, yeah, too much sledge. We're gonna, once they did desludge it, stabilize it, so. Is some problems with the banks, erosion, quit weed whacking, the two big banks. We're gonna get it cut down and or burned here in the fall. It's, it's okay to have vegetation, but we don't need trees grown in there because then the roots work into the banks and that's a problem. But like I said, turtles, they sort of woodchucks or whatever that's digging holes in the bank, it's not a good thing. The aerators, when they were bought, we did the grant for them, seventy-eight thousand dollars for the aerators. Fortunately, they were ordered at ten instead of three horsepower. Cali put them in, they said that's, the old ones are, are not the same. They don't have to make three horsepower, so she just went with the next size, which is ten. We didn't know that until they came in. And we started looking at the cables, they're undersized, the starters, all, all the controls for them are, it's not gonna work because we had twelve horsepower in the pond before and now it's forty. The solar bees are working, our numbers are fine, we haven't failed one test. The solid oxygen's good, everything else is fine, the solar bees work. But DP would like to see backups in place if those go down. That's why we pay for the beekeeper program. It's about eleven, twelve thousand dollars a year to maintenance those solar aerators, replace batteries. We had one struck by lightning a long time ago, it was like twenty-five grand. And it was covered under that, so. Sand filters are good, everything else down the pond, yeah, it does do, it makes good numbers. It's a very simple process and with the solar aerators, you know, the electric bills are minimal. It's all right, everything's good, let's move back.
So is part of what the Eads looking into is, is upgrading our electrical system?
Yeah, we had a price, Tom Davis did a lot of, a lot of like work on getting, you know, what we would do, new conduits, new control panels. Because the stuff that's there is old, you know, even, even if they were able to feed it, power it, everything's getting weathered, you know what I mean? It's all been out there for thirty years or more. Other than that, the plants good, pump station, the East End, I have a call in to our, yeah, does our meters, calibrates the meters, he'll be coming here, I don't know, next week or the week after. And he's gonna give me a price on remote monitoring for the East End Pump Station. So that if it goes into high level, it'll monitor us instead of have to, you know, just guess when it, when to go down. Is time to degrade that much, if it rains like crazy, you get down, it's fine, and then an hour later, boom, it's over. So a lot of people have some pumps in the basement and the force police will test them, usually point those out because they have checkups. So it's not good. That should be taken care of here soon. You guys give us a price, ten thousand dollars, he thinks for about five grand, we can have something to treat. System-wise, like in the distribution system, I had a gentleman ask me this the other day, I told him I'd bring it up at the meeting. Tony DiCio has a, had a sewer problem. He had dug out all the way to his property line. Well, then, that's where he found the break luckily. But we allowed the medical building to put a parking lot over his sewer line. We didn't know that X amount of years ago, or long ago they put that building. He goes, what do I do if it's off my property? He goes, one, I don't have any sort of right of way. And you're telling me it's my responsibility to the main and it's all the way through this parking lot. We had a similar situation with Cook's, John had a problem where it went under the street. You know, we had another person on High Street that had, you know, where it goes under the street. I don't know if it's reasonable for municipality to make somebody do work off the property, you know what I mean? I don't. When I talked to John Ball, he said in Kane before, they told him if it was off the property, it was the municipality's responsibility. I'd like to talk to some other municipalities and see, the most newer systems, they're all right there. Like yours is in your front yard, but mine goes underneath Route Six. So, and it's in the middle of Route Six. You're talking sixteen inches of concrete, eight inches of blacktop, highway occupancy permits, traffic control, all that. You know, every place on Main Street is Frank's building, everybody, you know, would have to do that. So if we do replace it, like what we have in Wilcox, there's a sewer cap in your yard with a cleanout where it goes under the road. That's your, from there into the house, that's your responsibility. Everything else is considered part of the main. I told Tony I'd bring it up, and he's like, I don't have any problem now. He goes, but if we do, he goes, I didn't know I left there. And if I did, and I knew it was my responsibility, I wouldn't have let put the parking lot over it. But we didn't know, you know what I mean? And he's very well made tie-in. It might be a, a lateral because there used to be an old gas station or something there. There was another house where the, the pond is, just like my, uh, Hail, Steve Hale's place, all those houses come through in the one, but you don't know, you know? And our camera doesn't go into four-inch lines. So we wouldn't know, we'd have to pay Roto-Rooter to find it out, you know what I mean? So I guess we'd have.
With pumps and, and tanks and all that going back to.
Yeah.
Before my, before my lifetime.
That's the thing, so I guess.
And the old glass spear house, right?
Yeah, that was stored out. So I guess that's the thing, we gotta, gotta decide, where are we just gonna go, okay, tough shit? Or are we gonna change the policy or create a policy? I'm not asking if we gotta do it tonight, but if something comes up tomorrow, if we're, it's not a meeting, so we can't put anything in. But it's, we need, between now and the next meeting, we need to think about it, like where do we wanna make a definition of what's the customer's responsibility, what our responsibilities are, you know what I mean?
So one of the other things that I'd like you to address with the rest of the council is where we are as far as our Hamlin Township agreement and, and, and anything that we have going on with, with GP and Sergeant Township, what the.
Yeah, those, all those. Georgia Pacific, we have a contract with them that expires at the end of the year as far as their sewage and their cooling water. Needs to be evaluated, renegotiated and adjusted any way we see fit. We can leave it as it is, we can throw an increase on it to keep up with the inflation. Maybe even talk to the Eads Group as far as if they have any other corporate customers and they could maybe give us an idea of what they charge that per gallon. So that just needs to be taken care of by the end of the year. Hamlin Township has been operating without a contract for about two years, they just wouldn't sign it. When the Sewer Authority first allowed Hamlin Township to tie onto our system, they had a formula, it was hodgepodge, it was, it was the weirdest thing I ever seen where it was, every year based off our audit, you go through and see expenses. It was a very convoluted, a lot of fine print with shared common facilities and, you know, okay, it was Sewer Authority would do a job down here on the main line that comes in from the West End all the way around to the sewer line. And they go, well, Hamlin Township, according to the contract, is on the hook for eleven thousand dollars of it because it takes them out a percentage. And it was something that was done years ago. Then Hamlin Township gets hit with a surprise bill that they're not prepared for. So they end up paying an extra thousand dollars a month for two years. So it's really hard for them to compile a budget and keep their citizens' rates fair because they don't know what's gonna happen. And they're concerned, rightfully so, is well, what if the ponds fail? You know, are we on the hook for five million dollars? And we're a customer, so they just wouldn't sign it. They pay, they pay like a thousand dollars a month and, but they just won't sign onto a contract. They don't have any answers on it. So in talking with one of the supervisors, Jim Myers, the other day, I said, listen, we give you a straightforward, here's a cost per customer, that's it. And if, you know, we do it on a yearly or, or two, three year, whatever we decide we wanna do basis, would you sign it? Yes, we'd sign it, that would be great, then we would have some security. And if the ponds fail, then everybody's screwed. You know, we were gonna have to raise their rates, we're gonna have to raise our rates, we're gonna have to come drastic. So I think to take out the shared common facility and be good neighbors to our other municipality that's trying to run their, their budget. I know if we were on the hook for that, you, you know, if we were sending our sewage to them, that'd be unacceptable to me, you know? It's like, oh, okay, you didn't even ask me and you did a, a job that you wanted to do, it was an emergency, but now all of a sudden you're billing me thirty grand.
And it really didn't impact off the line and the service that we're.
But, you know, the shared common facility, again, but then you take in depreciation and how long that's been in there. It's just because you neglected it for thirty years, you know what I mean? We, we put a hundred thousand into that line and checking it out from Guffey Road to Mards and Milk Road back when I was on the sewer board, whenever, two thousand and eleven, and just to inspect it. But we never went the other way around, down the blares. So the problem was probably there, they didn't know about it. But then it was a surprise bill to Hamlin Township, so I'd like to get that squared away. And if we would happen to sell and we lock them in for X amount of years, they should have to honor it on that in return. So at least they would know what's going on.
We were talking about a lot of bad pipes and stuff, the other thing, have you explored, have you explored sleeving?
They have, I mean, they, Aqua's looked at it. There's places like down there where there's no taps that come in, well, there's maybe three or four that would work. But if we're looking for expansion, sometimes it gets hydraulically overloaded in that section. I think it's an eight-inch line, you know, you might wanna upgrade it.
No, I just remember Roz bringing it up all in just back.
We did some of that in that area with that hundred thousand back in the day. We did, did do some sleeving in Hamlin Ward.
But in likelihood that, that has a certain percentage of reduction in flow capacity, like.
Ah, not really, no, it's not that.
Sometimes they, it just explodes pipe and it's.
Okay.
It depends, it's, it's, something that's been around since.
I, I know, but you know. It's like, like part of three-inch pipe, it's out of four-inch pipe.
Oh, no, this is, this is like.
Depends on fuel.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's carbon fiber resin, they kind of.
Yeah.
I think last one, fifty years, something like that.
About it?
Yeah, it's about it. So something like.
Our last thing we need to talk about, because we've been, it's an issue that I know the Sewer Authority talks about and obviously we don't make any decisions, all of it is a conversation that needs to be happening is, as was pointed out, is rates. We have a flat rate that we use in our town. There's been talk about whether or not it might be beneficial to shift to a use, maybe a mixed usage flat rate system. I think that's what Aqua's generally uses, other municipalities use it. Definitely no beneficial to seniors and smaller households, but can put more cost on big families. So I've, no decisions have been made, but it is a conversation, obviously has to be had.
Well, normally your sewers, based off your where you're using.
Yeah, right.
They went away from it in two thousand and fifteen because Aqua's gonna charge them one dollar per customer.
Per read.
Per read.
Yeah, I flipped out at that meeting.
They wouldn't pay the dollar, so.
Because they wouldn't pay that dollar.
So I've had a lot of senior citizens saying, you know, it's not fair that I'm one person and I pay as much as five and I don't.
Oh, you remember my email comparing my building to. I'm actually getting a discount. I'm literally getting a discount because I produce more water and I pay the same rate.
Maybe we gotta have a base rate so that we can budget on it. And we can get with Aqua as far as what the average house uses, and if it's four thousand, then we can basically say, okay, you know, we're gonna charge X amount for a gallon. And then we could have a pretty decent idea. Somebody changes toilets for showerheads or whatever, you know, they, they lose their money, they don't have that.
Well, that would serve a couple of purposes. It would, it would make the billing fair to the user. Again, the, the low-end user is probably not gonna see, maybe see a slight decrease, I don't know. I don't know, but the high end users going, they will money. But then it would almost certainly have an increase in cash flow, which makes your debt to income ratio look better, which in turn, when you start looking at Penn Vest loans or any, any grant that we go after, we're in a better position and we will have, we would have more cash flow, cash, and to capitalize if we have to do a matching grant.
Well, I'm just looking at it as, you know, from a realistic point of view. I have a building over there, and the amount of water used, and I'm getting a discount, that's just not fair.
Sure.
And how many buildings are there that are in that si- same situation?
I think like, for instance, Holly Crowley, she put a bathroom in a garage for a beauty shop and charged her an extra EDU. Well, if you go to just based on water usage rate, you don't have to worry about the EDU because you're paying what you use, so she would get a discount because I go get my haircut, I don't use your bathroom, you know, most of the time. So, if you got an apartment building, okay, you gotta add some amount of units.
I think it's fair because what you're using.
Well, that's one of the things that we, that we've thrown out, and, and it's in the preliminary, but we're gonna need to come up with some-
Right.
Some good numbers and, and, and float it sooner than later as to if we're gonna change the, the whole billing rate structure, and then, of course, we have to get, we'll be paying for the reeds from Aqua, which is, what are we, four hundred, something like that?
I think it'd be wise to do, if we're gonna do it, we can get it done so it starts January one, so that if anybody may have paid for the year, because it's forty-five bucks or forty-four bucks, whatever, somebody may have just go, "There, there's my water built for the year, and I don't have to worry about it." Or, "We do have the billing system, the old billing system is still there, the guy that ran it died." So, called the number to see if it still had support, if we needed to change it, didn't get a call back, 'cause I assumed that somebody might have bought it, but I'm not certain, so we might have to, it might just be more than that, we might have to, you know, get a new billing system, print them out, because right now they're doing them on QuickBooks, which is fine, but everybody's the same. So, you need to be able to account number and import from Aqua the usage, and it generates the bill. If not, you know, we got Barb who is doing this stuff now, and it's a little more labor intensive, when you gotta go in once a month, type in X amount of water read numbers, it would be quite a bit worse.
I know by experience, each cell is very easy to-
If they give you the data like that.
Yeah, very, very easy to do in there.
As long as that calculation is set up.
As long as each cell has its proper calculation.
Yeah. If we get that set up, it'd be fine.
So, something we'll probably wanna look into just to see what the numbers, kinda how things come out and decide-
If I set it up, we can do it.
How, if that's the right move. Um, all right. I didn't really have anything else on my preliminary list, is there anything else the council, anyone on council has? Questions, concerns?
I'm sure something will come up later.
Do we, do we wanna do the questions now and then the tour, or how do you wanna do it?
Yeah, unless the tours, they, they all make, they might not.
Might not, might not. All right, so with that, we'll throw the floor open to the room. I ask, before we start, um, 'cause I've been at some of these meetings, I know people are passionate about this, let's please check our language, check our tempers, let's not be belligerent. I will feel compelled to shut down an argument, but that goes for councils as well, if it starts to get ugly, um, it's just not necessary. Nobody up here is failing, nobody out there is failing, we're all just trying to make the right decision for the community. So, and I will do time limits. As always, just 'cause there are so many of you, and with that, I will throw it up and whoever would like to go first, it looks like Mr. Heidner would like to go. Yes, sir?
Well, after sitting here for the last hour and five minutes, uh, I have some comments that I'd like to make. One, uh, I will say, I give you guys credit for trying to make the public a part of this, and, and, and if I put myself in your shoes, you can only make decisions based on information that you have. And unfortunately, we touched on a whole bunch of subjects in the last hour and five minutes, and, and there are some things that I know are one hundred percent incorrect information that, that you received. And so, you're only gonna be able to make decisions based on that information, and if the information isn't correct, then the, the decision that you're gonna make is gonna be adjusted accordingly. And so, so the first thing that I'd like to say as a comment, and I'm gonna try to keep this summarized, 'cause I know you're gonna bang the hammer and shut me off, it, when the community owns the sewer system, which the community, it's all of us own the sewer system, the sewer system charges what it takes to run the system. If a private company owns it, the advantage is, it's run by professionals, which is our biggest problem. Our, our sewer system hasn't been run by professionals in some time. And, and, and the, the professionals are trained properly to make decisions. However, if a private company takes it, they're in business to make a profit, they're not in business to tread water like it would be if we were running our own sewer system. So, so when it comes to affecting the people, customers, they're gonna pay more, uh, realistically, uh, the, the chances of getting better service is higher, because whenever there's any sort of problem, it's gonna be addressed by true professionals that have training. I could say personally that I am the only person in this room that is licensed to make water quality and quantity decisions at that sewer facility, and, and you just got a whole bunch of information from someone that took the same board test that I took and failed them. But that was your choice to put that person in that position to give you that information.
Please don't be insulting or downgrading.
Well, I didn't say it to be insulting, I was trying to state the, the facts that, that I'm hearing a whole bunch of information, and some of the things I know, I know the facts on those, and, and, and whether it's the residents or the council people, some of those things are correct, but a lot of them are incorrect, and I know from personally being involved. Another problem that we have with the small town running it versus if a professional run it, the rules are gonna be the same. Now, I just seen an example where so-and-so, that may be somebody's friend, has a sewer line that runs under somebody else's parking lot, so we should only be responsible to the other property. Now, I personally had a sewer line that the water company broke on their middle of the road, and I had to fix it, and so did that gentleman right there, had to pay out of them, but then went to somebody's friend, now all of a sudden, well, maybe the sewer helped out a little bit. Steve Hale got his line replaced the whole way to the main for free, and the sewer authority paid for it. And so, so those kinda things, those kinda things affect the rates because the authority is paying for it. And, and, and while I'm on rates, I'm gonna try to keep this short, the, the agreement between Hamlin Township and, and Mount Jewett Sewer Authority was drawn up by Hamlin Township's engineer, and their engineer was drawing it up to make it so that a municipality that had very, very little money could afford to tap into this sewer system. And, and there was a lot of problems with that agreement, and I personally read it from the first page to the last page, but I had no authority. I was not in a position of authority, and I, and I have never been when it comes to anything to do with management. However, I have had professional management training. That agreement unfortunately was signed by Pat McGuire, and he, either one didn't read it or didn't take the time to analyze it and get advice professionally, because when, when that was, when that was first introduced, we were getting two hundred and fifty dollars a month for over a hundred, a hundred customers. So, so right now, I don't know exactly what the EDUs are, but about a hundred and five to the best of my knowledge, and so we're getting what was just reported as a thousand dollars per month. That-
You were reaching the end of your time, so if you could wrap it up, please.
Well, it comes down to, those people of Hamlin Township are paying into our system about nine dollars fifty-two cents apiece, and the rest is going to Hamlin Township that they're using to pay for their loan for their pump stations that they had to install. Now, it does say in the Borough Codebook that no community that ties into another community system can have rates that are lower than the rates of the people that own the system. And this is a perfect case, when it was the authorities, when it was owned by the, run by the authority, that was perfectly legal, but once the borough took it over, now the borough's operating it, and, and, uh, uh, another municipality is dumping sewage into our system, and they're paying a quarter of what the residents are paying that actually own the system. And that needs adjusted.
I do have to stop you there.
Can I give him my five minutes? Cause he's got a role.
Well, we haven't addressed any of the things he said either.
That's true.
Because we just talked about working out an agreement with Hamlin, which would be based, we didn't say what the rate was, or that they would be lower than us, they just said that if a rate or an agreement came to them that just had a rate per person, that's what they'd be interested in. We haven't negotiated that, we haven't even discussed that, so that issue may well be addressed with what we're talking with Hamlin Township about now. We weren't part of that original agreement, as you stated, the gentleman who was hasn't been part of anything for a while. Um, so a lot of those things are things we're going to be trying to address. Um, was something else I could run? Um, is there someone else that has something to say?
You don't wanna be, you want to allow me to give him my five minutes? Cause he wasn't near finished, I'm sure.
Do, do you wanna not have anything to say then? Is that your choice?
I'll certainly pass mine up for him to do some.
Um, as long as, just try to keep it pleasant.
I have some things I'd like to say, if I'm permitted to talk.
I'll give you another five minutes, but I'll ask that you not disparage people or name names, please.
Well, I didn't come here to offend anybody. Uh, I would like to say that, that, to try to keep it as short as I can, the lagoons are a very efficient system, they work very well for residential waste, they are not designed for industrial waste. So, so those are some of the problems that we came across when we started taking on industrial waste. We cannot deal with high ammonia levels when the water drops below seven degrees Celsius. And, and, and I approached the DEP before the quote, "cooling water" was, was sent to our system, and the DEP told me that it had too much ammonia and that they do not recommend that we accept it. Now, they can't tell us that we can't take it because ultimately we're only responsible for what comes out the pipe. If we can deal with it and make it come out the pipe and meet the permit levels, then, then, then they can't tell us that we can't take it, but they don't recommend it, because when the cooler water in the wintertime is there, we can't do anything with the ammonia levels. And our permit does adjust a little bit for ammonia, but not enough for industrial water. But I, but before my time is up, I'd like to say that from, from nineteen sixty approximately, when that system was put into use until two thousand and twenty, in June of two thousand and twenty, I personally bought a sludge judge, because we didn't even have one down there, rode out in the boat, and, and, and the deepest point of sludge that I found was six inches. And, and, and that is sludge that will no longer break down ever. Now, I don't know what the new permit says, but the permit that was in effect at the time said eighteen inches is the limit of, of sludge that we can have in any of those lagoons, and, or they'll have to be dredged and drained. So, so it was just reported today that the sludge is twelve inches. So, so that's proof that the plant is failing, and, and, and I already knew that, but this is proof of it, because we've acquired forty years' worth of sludge just since we've changed how we operate it. So, from two thousand and twenty till now, we've doubled our sludge, and, 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 and one of the problems is aeration. You need more than four parts per million of oxygen in Lagoon Number One right now. And, and I don't know what the dissolved oxygen is in Lagoon Number One, because I'm not allowed down here, but, but I have the knowledge to tell you what you could do to fix that, and unfortunately you've hired someone to be our licensed operator that lives in Clarion, that is also our engineer, that has a conflict of interest because he wants it to be drained, cause he's gonna make hundreds of thousands of dollars for designing the draining and dredging of the lagoons. And, and, and my, I'm a resident of this town, I would like to be able to see us break the sludge down more, but, but for one thing, we ordered new aeration, hello, well, I'm sorry, excuse me, we ordered new aeration, but we ordered horsepower motors that are too high for our electrical system. That is an example of mismanagement, that, the, the aeration should have been ordered according to engineering and plant operator. Unfortunately, the plant operator and the engineer is the same person that, that supposedly comes up once every two weeks, there's no documentation that he's ever done any chain of custody or sample-ing himself personally, from when I did write to know, but the problem that we're having is, we're so focused on channeling our money to this one person that does not have the proper training, and the plant is getting away from us, and it's gonna cost all of the residents a whole bunch of money. And now we're faced with, "Well, what do we do with this, or do we sell it, or what do we do?" Well, you can only make decisions based on information that you got, but if you're not getting the correct information, then, then you can't make the pro, nobody can make the proper decision if you're not getting the correct information, but it just seems to be that we're so focused on, no matter who it is, a licensed person should be down there every day. We've done it like that for years and years and years, and for, for forty years, we had six inches of sludge, and, and four years, we've accumulated, humanated twelve inches of sludge, and we're approaching the limits to where it has to be dredged, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, so it comes down to management and, and, and mismanagement, and there's proactive maintenance and there's reactive maintenance. We can't just fix something once it's already broke. And we, and we don't know that it's broke because nobody's checking it, because they've got other responsibilities, and we don't have a dedicated person to oversee our system. We have a part-time person that, we don't even have documentation that they're even down there. And I, and I'm not saying that to offend anybody, I'm saying that because that's part of the formula of why the plant's gotten away from us. And I feel like I'm watching a little kid playing on the tracks, and a train's coming, and I'm, I can't stop the train because the engineer is best friends with the person that's got the life insurance policy on the kid.
I gotta stop you.
Okay.
That's another five minutes. Um, would you like to respond, to give you the opportunity? Did anybody have anything to say about those comments? And part of what you're talking about, about management, mismanagement, oversight, as has been discussed, we took over in May, we're looking at everything, we just talked about looking at everything. That's gonna include, um, staffing, are, are we staffed properly? Obviously, we lost our, our sewer secretary, so we have to look at all of these things, what is the best way? If we were to talk, like, to your point, and bring in a full-time licensed operator as opposed to a part-time operator that we have now, that's additional costs, so that's something we would have to look at. There's, there's a lot of factors that go into that, and we're, we're new to running it, so we're, we're, we're not ignoring anything, we picked it up as it was, we have to keep operating it, so we're operating as it was, and we're taking everything that's being said, and we're hearing it. So, I'm assuring you that we're hearing it. I do need to give anyone else a chance to talk.
Well, I can agree with him to a point on some of the issues, and that's not, not even. We've had sewer ports, won't raise the rate, won't do this, if we do raise the rate, somebody's hollering at me, whatever, so there was always that personal that always interfered. If we actually had the individuals that just didn't care, come to me in the street and be like, "I don't care what you say, this is what we need to do." Cause if Aqua had it, you're gonna go down to their main office and complain? I mean, you could report them to the PUC if you think you're doing something wrong, but you're not gonna go down to the main office and complain to the vice president that, you know, "I don't like what you're doing."
Can you speak to that somewhat? Again, the longer time we own and operate the system, we will be responsible for all the monies, and, and we have to raise the money through rate, rate increases and/or grants and/or loans to try to justify and substantiate any work that we're going to do to the system in the future. As opposed to, you know, a, a PUC entity has to put the money in, and then they go out and seek a rate increase to justify, you know, Aqua has gone in and said, "Okay, we put six and a half million dollars in their water system in less than ten years." And so, the rate increases that we see for, from, well, actually eight years, because they had a two-year rate moratorium, the rate increase that I quoted before, which is less than ten percent per year, that is to substantiate what they've already put into the system, the six and a half billion dollars. They're not saying we, we need to raise our rates because we wanna, we wanna replace this, we wanna do that. They have to demonstrate to the PUC that they've already put the money into it, so we, we need a rate increase to justify the money that we put in. And that's the diff, that's one of the big differences between private ownership and public entity is, we're going to have to raise that money somehow through rate increases, Penn Vest loans, or some other, some other source of income, uh, to put any money into the system, whether, whether, however it came- To put any money into the system, whether, whether, however came about that we need, whether it's the collect or whatever, whether, whether the lines need replaced or the sewer pond needs, needs dredged or we send somebody down it with a shovel. I, I love it. But we have to raise the money ahead of time.
Is the sale of bonds allowed with us? Because I know towns will do that. They'll have municipal bonds, long-term.
Good question. We'd have to, PSAB might be able to answer that. I can't speak to that.
I mean, that's just another avenue. Maybe, maybe not.
I don't know. Did you have a comment?
Yeah. On my sewer line, when it was broke, it was broken on the other side of the curb to where the main line is. So does that mean I own that part of the street now because I black topped it? And I put all that new piping in it for four thousand dollars? That I had to take a loan out for to pay for that? And then the water lines go right over the top when they put the new water lines in. Them heavy machinery, you can't say, them clay pipes that you got under there are so old that not, them heavy machineries couldn't have went across there and, you know, crushed the dirt down on them? But see, I paid four thousand dollars out of my own pocket to do all that. And then I had somebody that would ask for help, that said he would help me. And somebody, I'm not gonna miss any of these, but told them, no, you don't help that. But I can't, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus.
No, I understand that.
I'm not giving anybody that I know that's in trouble.
I appreciate that.
We're, we're probably looking at a policy issue that needs to be addressed. Like we said, where, where do we, where do we draw the line? Does it?
But I'm not gonna get that four thousand dollars back.
No, I'm sorry. When, when, when did you do that? When would that, when did that happen? Two years ago?
Yeah, about two years ago.
Didn't think it was fair then, but that was the policy.
Yeah, and everybody told me, don't even go down and try to find it because you're not, you're not gonna win. Okay, so I didn't, I didn't even bother. I just said, you know what, I'm not.
Well, I always encourage someone to come down and find it. You just never know it. Some of these policies have been up for a long time. They do need to be addressed.
But the contractor that they, is a really nice guy. He gave me a really good discount on that lottery. Cause he had to come back up and fix the line again because it was broke down through.
And, and the reality is, well, it's not, we can't turn around and give you your money back. We could, we could learn from that hopefully. If there's a way to have a better policy, prevent it in the future.
And the last part where it was broke, the second part where it was broke, was where your guys' line go down, the, the main pipe go down. It was broke right at the head there. So we had to put a new piece of plastic and we had to put something in there. So now I can turn that and look down in there and see if it's plugged or make the sewer company can look and see it's plugged.
I think our sewer system here is like, I'm gonna compare it to freeways. They think four lanes is good. But then people start moving in and they need six lanes. So they have to regroup and restructure. And they probably, when they first started building, maybe they, you know, they're not gonna have, they didn't figure all the gifts.
Technology's changed, the pipes have.
It worked for years.
I, I don't know where you live. Where do you live?
For High Street.
Cause I know East Main Street, we ran into an issue where it never, the, the water main was not under Route Six, but the road was widened and, and stretched out. And, and all of a sudden, on the curb lane, when, and, and when it was installed, it was, it, it was off the road substantial. But now the road has been widened and the day after, there, we had water literally shooting up out of Route Six out of just east of the ambulance building down there. And that was never intended, you know? But then PennDOT just widened the road out enough to where now everything is overlapping. I'm not saying that's what happened upon High Street, but, but that, that's what happens when you have aging infrastructure. It's not, you just keep blacktopping and cementing and adding a line here and overlapping there.
And that's, that's why we have the strategy of trying to get in front of some of these things. Really look at the system, look at the pipes, look at where things need to be addressed, figure out how we're gonna fund them. It's like, we wanna be more proactive, reactive as much as possible within constraints of our budgets. Our budgets are tight and there's loans and things out there. We'll look at those. It's, it's not something we're gonna make better overnight, but it is something we're gonna take serious and, and work towards. That's why the committee exists. And it's why, you know, a lot, a lot of the committees on this, I don't know, don't meet that often. But this sewer committee is meeting. Because of Anders. Anyone else have something? You're hanging one up first. You wanna?
No, what I wanted to say was, I talked to two local officials, one state, one local, and asked them what, you know, what we could do. And they said, well, the best thing to do is fight it, hold them, keep them by it and selling it. The simple reason is, once they have both water and sewer, Aqua owns us. They will own us. There's nothing you can do about rates. Now you're at the point where you can adjust your rates. But when they're there, you're done. What they get from the PUC.
And, and part of what we wanna do is, what I'd like to do is, there's a lot of municipalities that have gotten out of utilities over the years. There's very few that are still in them. And, and talk to some of those that got out of it five years, ten years, fifteen years ago and be like, what was this experience like? To your point. Did you get screwed? Do you feel like as soon as Aqua owned everything, was it still fair to your? You know, PUC's gonna try to make sure it's fair. We wanna do the same. We don't wanna hand something over and then, because we live here too, we're gonna get hamstrung as much as everyone else. So certainly that's not something we wanna do.
Well, rates in Kane, Sky High, and American Water owns the sewer and the water.
And that's something.
And I have to know a family, and I have a copy of the bill at home. I meant to bring it, I forgot it. That they're paying a few people water and sewage, about a hundred eighty, two hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, I think somebody shoved you a bill too.
And I'd love to see the breakdown, like, what are they paying per?
Well, I know.
I've heard a couple of things added that we never had.
Their sewer is supposed to be a problem. Yeah. And like I'm saying is, they own them. There's nothing they can do. They can argue it.
No, I hear you. Yeah, they can. I mean, you know, there's, there's protests. PA America just had a substantial setback by the PUC this year. Substantial. They didn't get anywhere near what they, what they were looking for. And they, 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 they put in an investigation. It, it, it's not a moot point. I mean, yeah, everything that they do has to go before PUC approval. Whereas we could sit here on the fourth of the month and double or triple the rate or do whatever we want. Nobody can do a thing about it. Nobody can say a thing about it. Nobody has any control.
We under- I understand that, but number one, you can control it with reason.
Within reason? Let me just say that if, if our only concern as a community is rate increase.
No.
Yeah, no, let me finish my statement. If our only concern as a community, and I've lived here all but ten years in my sixty-nine years. By the way, today's my birthday. Thank you for the cards and letter. If, if it's only rate increases, if that's the only thing that's fueling what we're, what we're looking at, then we're being very narrow-minded and myopic. We have a whole lot more on the table than just what we're paying per month. We have the second lowest rates in the state. And when we look at what it takes to operate, update, maintain, you know, we're at about three hundred and fifty thousand in, in borough budget. Now we're taking on this, I think. We have to look at a much bigger picture and for the viability of the community compared to what's around us. We are totally surrounded by Hamlin Township. Totally, completely. Right down the road, you got Sergeant Township. The only way that we're going to have any success moving forward beyond my lifetime is to align ourselves with, with emergency services and utilities with the people around us. And that's going to, that's going to take in Hamlin Township and probably Sergeant Township and, and looking beyond the myopic of how much we're paying a month in, in, in sewer or a water rate. What's happening in Kane? I really can't speak to that because I, I, and, and you make a point about, well, now they have us. When you look at what's happened over the last ten years and if you go to their website, which I have, and you look at what they've paid in buying similar systems in the last three to five years and it's all out through a public record. You can look at Aqua's, you can look at Aqua's track record and you'll see that for the most part, they're very fair. They're not gonna come in and say, okay, now, now we've got their sewer, so we're just gonna sock it to them. That hasn't been the case in, in any of the, in any of the purchases that they've made in recent years. And, you know, but, but there, again, cart before the horse. Let, let's, let's address what we need to do to keep our system running.
But I would, I would also certainly, sorry, invite, Aqua has said they'll come to our town hall meetings and put them to the test on those questions and, and call them out and, and put, put their feet to the fire and, and tell them those concerns because they're valid and see how they responded. And maybe none of us will like how they respond. The only way we're gonna know is if we put them on the spot right there.
Right. Well, you talked about changing the rates. Just my wife allows me to pay forty-four dollars a month.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm happy with that.
Right.
Because it's affordable for me. It's probably affordable for most people.
I'm sure it is.
Doesn't seem like it's bad, but it's fair to everybody's paying the same.
It, it, it depends because if you got a household of six people, is it fair they're paying the same that you're paying? It depends on how you define fair. They might not think so far. Mahabharata.
Yeah, it's a lot. He's paying forty-four.
Yeah, but like they had said, they were explaining you have the base fee and then so many thousands a gallon. Being a family of two, I imagine your, your water, you want, and your water use is very small.
Well, we used to do it. It was, you know, okay, hey, I filled the swimming pool. All right, give me your meter reading and, you know, you know what I mean? And that way, you're not paying for whatever. Yeah. Watering my grass, like planting my grass. You don't have to pay that on the sewer bill too, but at least it was fair. You know? All we're really concerned about is what's going down the sewer. So if you go back to that rate and you do whatever, I don't think we're gonna take phone calls because I'm washing my car today, but, you know, hey, I'm gonna fill a swimming pool. It's five thousand gallons or ten thousand gallons. Okay, no problem. Or, hey, a pipe blew in my basement. You can give it a leak adjustment.
I had.
Yeah.
You remember?
I'd like to share a little something, because I talked about this a lot. I've just, that's real hard on my toilet system, my bathroom pretty much do. All of a sudden I started hearing this noise. I couldn't figure out what it was. There was a poet, couldn't see nothing, running through all, like, in the tank. There's a white, white plank inside my tank. It got down into a flapper bowl. It's a Cosmog.
What's left?
It's part of Cosmog.
I, I would have to assume it's the chlorine levels.
So that's, I'm hard to hear. I have barely heard. How many houses around this town do that? Be that, do that right now?
Something like that, if it's leaking, you know? That is unfortunately going down the sewer, but it'll, it'll raise the bill.
I, I'd like to know, how many times have they flushed water lines since they had the system?
Oh, no, they've seen it do it.
Exactly. And our water, that's another.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
As far as Aqua goes, they do not call you and tell you, you have a leak.
They don't?
No. No, cause I had, I had a toilet rate issue and my, my bill more than doubled. They don't call me.
My question.
I had to pay the bill.
So far, I got like five thousand dollars under my trailer.
Ernie, you had your hand up a little bit earlier.
Yeah, I wanted to address Chuck. We are not the second lowest. Port Allegheny is forty-four dollars for three months. Bradford is seventy-five dollars every other month. I'm just telling you, we're not the lowest.
Okay. If, if that's the case, the, the information that I had, given to me was we were the second lowest. And if that's, if that's wrong, then I sit through it.
And as far as Hamlin goes, they did know about the work down there on the pipeline. They were involved in it. They wanted it done. They come to the borough and ask them to get it done so that they can hook up sheets and Bellegence General out there. So it's not, it wasn't a mystery to them that we did that work down there.
What of Blair's?
Yeah.
Well, they were aware of the one out by, where we were having the overflows, which was behind bars, that section. Blair's, they didn't know they were getting that kind of, they got out past Jimmy Truston, but they were not aware of it.
Well, apparently they must have been aware of it because.
They got the bill.
Well, then they paid it, so they knew.
Yeah, but there was nothing you could do about it.
I'm just telling you. I mean, if, if they didn't, wasn't aware of it, do you think they'd have paid the bill? They won't sign the contract.
That's, that's kind of what they had to do, you know what I mean?
All right, over here.
So I've been watching all you guys' meetings since then, okay? So you've had this for three months. I have a serious concern which everybody else in this entire town should have a serious concern about our certified operator, okay? I've read through all the DEP stuff and it comes to wastewater treatment. You've had this for three months, okay? Did you know in those three months that our operator is not certified operator to run wastewater treatment facility? Which John has said. John's brought it up multiple times. I mean, I have a very serious concern about that. When we had, when we had, when we had the water. And when we had the water authority. I was on the water authority at the time, okay? Our operator, absolutely. It doesn't matter if he was full-time, part-time. That wasn't brought up at all. He had to be certified operator that went through the testing and was authorized to do what he was doing. So that's what I've been looking at and trying to find all this stuff out. It, why are we running a system with somebody who's not authorized, according to the state, to do this? I mean, and that's what, that's my concern.
Cause that's our friend, the borough council member.
I don't, I'm not here to offend nobody. I don't care about whose name is who. I don't, nothing. My concern is, we have a utility that you guys are in charge of. You've been in charge of it for three months, okay? Did you know that our operator is not certified? And have you done anything to get the operator certified? If he is certified now, fantastic.
Okay, I didn't know he was certified.
Okay, that, that, my question is to all you guys. I'm not looking personally.
That's, that's not an accurate statement. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna explain this to you.
I didn't make a statement.
I'm not the certified operator. The Eads Group is our certified operator. Marty English hangs his license. He's an engineer and he is a certified water treatment plant operator. Eads Groups comes every two weeks, checks everything. All the lab samples every week are emailed to them and they are employed by us. I am a certified sewer distribution operator. I have a license. It hangs in the office over there. You're more than welcome to see it. I'm certified distribution. John's right. I did fail a test. In two thousand and fif- sixteen, this Hamlin Township said, you're gonna go run that sewer plant. And that sewer plant was a piece of shit. And I didn't wanna run it because I was the plow guy. So I figured I'll go down, take the test. I'm not wasting time. I'm not studying. But then it turned out, I failed the test because I didn't study for it. And then I learned how to run the sewer system and now I run four of them. So every day, seven days a week. I could go take the test now. That requires more classroom work, more studying and added continuing education hours every three years. I hold a certified water operator license as well. I run like eight different municipal water and wastewater systems. I don't want any more paperwork. So I prefer to have the Eads Group here doing that because they're a large firm with more assets and resources. So we do have a certified operator. He is not here seven days a week. I am. And if there's any problems, the first thing to call is certified operator. So these lagoon plants, there's, other than the aeration and the chlorine, there's no adjustments that can be made to it. So we, I assure you, we do have a certified operator. They're very good and, you know, so please don't be misled. I'm not offended. No, I know that's, that was a good point.
That's just, that's why I came to this meeting was to bring up something that I've heard and something I've.
Speaking for myself, that was something I'm aware of. It, it was a decision made by the sewer authority some years back. I, I am aware that we have an operator and that we have the Eads Group as the certified. Whatever that arrangement was, it was established, it was working. There is a certified operator overlooking it and runs it here day to day. And we were aware of that.
The buck stops with the Eads Group. And that, that arrangement was made at a substantial stage. Prior, well prior to us taking over the, when that was, the, what they were paying the previous operator was more than double what it's costing us now, including the cost of the Eads Group. We, if you factor the cost of the Eads Group plus the salary that's paid to the operator, it's still less than half of what we were paying previously to a full-time operator. You had the, the numbers of the last video you watched, you probably heard it. It was thirty-two thousand dollars a year saving.[1776.84]
So it's not that we're running here with nobody that's certified. I do hold a sewer certification, but it's just for the distribution system. I could and probably should, I make a lot more money because I can make money that the Eads Group is charging here and every place elsewhere. But I'm dyslexic and I don't wanna study.
No, perfect, thanks. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you, gentlemen, that was.
Thank you for having me.
Very welcome.
Does anyone else have any other questions or comments? We've heard from a lot of people. This is by no means intended to be the last conversation that we will be having with the public. We want you guys to be a part of it. Aqua, like I said, will also be a part of it. This is, this was primarily a work session. The goal here was to update our own council on what happened in that phone call with Aqua, which was our first phone call, very preliminary, to talk to them about where we are with the sewer, what the recommendations are a little bit, get their ideas. Because quite frankly, and maybe this is selfish on my part, I would much rather have something like this that can, we have been here how long? Than have our monthly meeting take four days. And so that is me being selfish, saying the sewer has been eating up a lot of a monthly meeting that has a lot of business to get to. And we just can't have it. If, if people have things that come up month to month, fine, come talk to us. But just, we, I, Brett, there was a comment back and forth that went like almost 15 minutes in one of our monthly meetings. I just, I can't have it. So as needs arises, these sorts of things will happen. Look for more town halls.
That's why town hall is important.
And, and absolutely will happen. When we have more information to share, or if the public has new concerns or questions that aren't being addressed, you know, talk to us and, and we'll, it's, it's a dialogue. We'll keep it going as best we can.
Well, we check with some people, that all these people here, really, most of them.
Yeah, I haven't gotten.
They didn't know anything about the sewer sale. They don't know anything about it. So we need a town meeting to make people aware of what's going on.
The, the thing about the, having a town meeting, and, and I understand the concern, but we're talking a year or so out, and we're also talking about something that might never happen. So there's a little bit of question as to whether it's, you know, at what time is it good to try and get everybody all brought up and then say, oh, never mind?
You don't have to have just one town meeting.
I, we don't intend to.
And you can have one to make the public aware, and that's where questions will be developed.
They're not reading the newspaper, they're not getting on Facebook, and they don't see it.
Like you told me, but you know, you really, the only requirement is to have a still seen in the newspaper to make people aware that nobody sees.
And this has put a lot of stuff in there.
But I mean, I don't get a newspaper, I don't do Facebook, because that's a waste of time.
If we were to put something on the bulletin board?
I don't, I don't know.
The touch, would, I mean, would that help?
Yeah, that's what Brett mentioned, he said, maybe even, you know, what could more we do? Maybe put something here, there, or the next place.
Short of going to everybody's house, not gonna ignore, not gonna do.
And that's the thing is.
You got a library, you got a bank, you got, maybe a pizza job.
I can say, in my role with some of the nonprofits in town, there are people in this town that every avenue we can think of to reach them, we just don't reach them. They, they, they're not online, they're not reading the paper, they're not doing anything to engage in the community, and then they're. But they don't always read what's on the bulletin. I just saw a bulletin board for the first time, and that's the thing, you're right. Sometimes, sometimes we have to draw the line and say, if you didn't care about it, I don't know what to tell you. Like, we're trying.
What I don't wanna see happen is, can somebody make a motion to sell the sewer? Yeah, I make it, I second it, everybody aye, everybody nay, whatever. But I don't wanna see it go through without the public knowing about it.
And that's what I said at the top, that will not happen. This is not something that will happen, it's a closed-door meeting or a five-minute, whatever. There will be a lot of discussion amongst ourselves, with the public. We're all in this together, we all live here, we all have to be neighbors. Even if you vote us all out, we still gotta live here and be your neighbors. And we don't want anyone hitting my house because I just got a new roof, so please.
Do you ever wash off them?
But I, I'm, I can't see having a town meeting now until we have any information from Aqua whatsoever.
Any, I don't have the recommendation.
Then it's just a bunch of people going, you shouldn't sell. Well, we, why, what's the benefit?
Well, at least you'll know what they do.
Well, I know what they do, that's fine.
Misinformation on that part may serve any purpose.
But we can't answer so many questions.
Misinformation going the wrong way doesn't serve any purpose until you've heard.
Well, you won't give them this misinformation.
It's a lack of information.
Well, and that's okay, even just so that they know what the intent is to sell.
It hasn't entirely been okay so far, the lack of information with some people. Yes, sir, you have a question, something.
Craig and I, we took a walk around town at the time, and most of these people wouldn't be here if we had told them we were having that. Maybe not here today. We, I read the paper.
Yeah, had people chase me down.
Is there just, we've been to certain.
But how do we get it out to people that don't have a newspaper or Facebook? What are you gonna suggest?
We have a website, and I'm not sure if it was on, they might have been. I don't, I don't think it was.
I've never looked at the borough website. Me, but it's, we do have one. I didn't know we had one here.
You got a wall out. You have it for like ten years.
Posted on the wall.
In all truth, this actually wasn't intended to be a town hall discussion. This was a work session, a work session, which is.
You understand that.
Which was scheduled in January.
We're allowed to be here.
Exactly, you're allowed to be here, but what I'm saying is.
And we are allowed to put in a, like you did, you ran your meeting, and you asked for a.
That's actually another issue.
And we're allowed to do that.
Absolutely, and I'm not saying you're not. I'm just saying that this was advertised in January, this is our monthly work session. We've talked about them before, sometimes we have stuff to bring up, sometimes we don't. So it's, it's not exactly the same as a town hall where I would blast flyers all over town saying, please come be at our town hall.[1699.35]